Thank you all for coming this afternoon. We're going to call this meeting to order. Let the record show that all council members are present. All present are here. Councilmember Cobb is on Zoom. Can you hear us, Councilwoman Cobb? Okay. And don't forget to unmute when you want to speak. So you good to go? Councilwoman, there you go. You good to go? All right. Thank you. All right. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Alvarez. And would you all please stand for invocation? Most gracious Father, we come to you once again, thanking you for your many blessings bestowed upon us. Give us the wisdom and knowledge that is needed, that we will make decisions for the good of all residents of Colleen. Continue to watch over our soldiers, their family members, especially those that are deployed throughout the USA and throughout the world. Keep them from all hurt, harm, and danger. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Councilmember Mayor Protem Adams?
Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Councilmember Solomon?
A second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Councilwoman Cobb, you can just raise your hand if you like. Are you in favor? Okay. Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero. We will now have our presentations. Madam Secretary.
PH 25029, Colleen Star Award.
Once again, thank you all for coming out. One of the honors that we have for the City Council and for the city of Colleen is recognizing a significant person in our community that goes beyond. They are problem solvers. They contribute when they're not even asked. They are our volunteers. In this month, Councilmember Protem has the distinct honor of recognizing one of those individuals. So if you are not a volunteer within the city of Colleen, there are so many opportunities, and we would love to see you standing right beside us to receive the Star Award. Count Mayor Protem.
I want to recognize, the person we are recognizing tonight embodies Dr. King's statement, everybody can be great because everybody can serve. She's a servant leader, true to the idea of service. You may see her on Full Hood, you may see her at the Girl Scouts, you may see her in one of the cleanup ditches, you may see her on everywhere. And you wonder, well, what else does she do? Then she shows up someplace else. She's the mother of five and a wife. And I'm going to tell you, the whole idea of embodying service is because all of our family members get recognized every year with a Presidential Volunteer Service Award because of the amount of service. Between the Girl Scouts, KVI, RHI, Texas, The Mission Continues, you name it. And that person there is none other than Ms. Janie Freed. She don't like to talk, so.
Riakos is making me. I just want to say thank you. I couldn't do what I do, like he said, without my family. My husband, my children, they all volunteer with Girl Scouts, with YVC, with The Mission Continues, with RHF. We support all of those programs. So, thank you all. I appreciate it.
Mayor Protem, thank you so kindly for selecting such an amazing citizen to receive the Colleen Star Award. Ma'am, once again, congratulations from the City Council and also city staff. Thank you. Madam Secretary, whenever you read.
PR 25030, Presentation of Bell County Child Safety Check.
Thank you. Good afternoon, sir. A long time no see.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, thank you, council. Thank you. It's a pleasure every year to come and hand out some money, because usually as a tax assessor, all I get, I just collect it all the time. But at the end of the year, I can hand out these child safety checks. So it's always a pleasure to be here. I want to take a moment to recognize several of the county officials that are here. We have Commissioner Precinct Two, Bobby Whitson, Commissioner Precinct Four, Louis Minor, and we have our county treasurer here, Galen Evans. So thank them for being here to support this great program. So in this last fiscal year, FY '25, we collected $1.50 on each registration for registering 333,600 vehicles here in Bell County. It totals over $500,000. This is the first time that we've had that many. It's a 25,000 increase in registered vehicles in Bell County this last year. And we've noticed, usually October, November, and December, it starts slowing down in our office. It hasn't stopped. We're registering, we're transferring a lot more titles. So with those title transfers, there are a lot more vehicles that are being bought. So since the program started in 2001, Bell County has collected and distributed $9,685,141.98. Of that total, over one-third was allocated to the city of Colleen, totaling $3,459,962.41. Now I'm going to read how this money can be allocated for you. And I believe you guys work with the Colleen ISD with these funds. But as outlined in the Transportation Code, Chapter 502.403, "The county tax assessor collector has the authority, with the approval from the commissioner's court, to levy an additional $1.50 per vehicle registration, excluding those exempted by code. These funds are earmarked for existing crossing guard programs. In cases where the school district lacks a crossing guard program, the money may be allocated to initiatives promoting child safety, health, or nutrition. This includes support for the child abuse prevention intervention as well as drug and alcohol abuse prevention. Alternatively, the funds can be directed towards programs enhancing public safety and security as per Article 102.014G of the Code of Criminal Procedure." The check for this year's allocation for Colleen is $185,998.68. A copy of this letter was also sent to Colleen Independent School District, Dr. King Davis. With that, I have a check. Usually Kent comes running to pick up the check. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank all the county commissioners and our treasurer for attending today's meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Discuss Agenda Items Three through Twelve for the December 2, 2025 regular session. No final action until regular session. Madam Secretary.
LMN 25029, Consider Minutes of Regular City Council Meeting of November 4, 2025. LMN 25030, Consider Minutes of Special City Council Meeting of November 4, 2025. RS 25185, Consider a Memorandum Resolution Approving the Investment Reports for the Quarter Ended September 30, 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Tanglin. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. According to the Public Investments Act and the governance policy, we are required to present a quarterly report for the investments. And Mr. Scott Grubers over here today to present that.
Thank you. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Another quarter in the books.
Yes, sir.
Moving quick. Last one of the calendar year. So just a quick recap of some of the excitement that we've endured over the last three months. Get this forward here real quick. Did I break it already? While we're doing that, so a couple of key highlights. So when we last met in September, the Fed has actually just embarked on their next investment meeting, or Fed meeting. So they did, oh, perfect. Thank you. So they did actually decide to lower the Fed funds rate again in September. So that was the first time this year, very similar to last year. They did nothing all year. We saw a big cut in September. This year, we saw a quarter percent reduction, as expected. And then in the November meeting, we saw another quarter percent reduction. And so we have one more meeting this year to close out the calendar year. As it stands today, we are expecting one more rate cut from the Fed. So if that occurs, that would be three cuts for a total of about three-quarters of a percent, which is in line with expectation. It's not something that was completely off the cuff. They did a full 1% of reductions last year. So this would just be the steady trend that they've embarked on, primarily citing labor market concerns. So we continue to have this dissection of inflation continuing to slightly move higher, and the labor market continuing to soften and weaken. It seems like they're very focused on the labor market and the overall economy starting to slow for their reasons to continue further cuts. One big key event that I spoke about with the Finance Committee was leading up to the September cut. So the markets essentially repriced and started to react to the fact that the Fed was going to continue to cut interest rates. So in the beginning of September, we actually saw yields, where we're buying rates, so one year out to five years, lowered very quickly. So rates dropped by about a half a percent ahead of the September rate cut. So come November, we actually didn't see very much reaction from the marketplace. So it'll be interesting to see how things kind of transpire in December, if we do get another cut, because I don't think that's been fully priced in yet. So we should actually anticipate the markets to come down a little bit lower. And when I say markets, I mean the yields that we're buying, as well as the Fed funds rates to continue to be reduced. One key thing here is that, you know, there's a lot of data. You're hearing this in the headlines a lot, whether the data is accurate or whether the data is even there. The shutdown did. We heard about the government shutdown. It worked its way through a lot of different areas of the economy and the markets. It did have some impacts on some of those reporting agencies that put together inflation, labor market reports. So there was some, a month of October where we actually didn't get some of that data. And many were thinking that could cause the Fed to pause and wait until the next meeting before they made any decisions. But it does look like, according to the futures market, that the Fed will continue to cut. So that could be a variable that gives them reason to be a little more patient and not cut. But as it stands today, we are expecting them to do a third cut here at the December meeting. Looking into next year, we're also expecting two to three more rate cuts into next year as things sit today. This is the shape of the yield curve. So I mentioned, leading up to the September meeting, rates actually priced in and dropped ahead of the September rate cut. So if you were to look at this more of a June over to September time period, this chart would be much different. You'd have much, much bigger decreases on that orange line. But the main takeaway here is that, a year ago, interest rates were above four and a half percent. Today, reinvestment rates are three and a half percent. So we've already seen interest rates across the curve come down. The positive behind this is everything we've talked about leading up to this. The city's investment portfolio has not taken a huge hit. We've been positioned longer. So we've actually been able to protect the city's interest income. As rates have continued to be moving lower, we're just reinvesting at lower rates. It's not an immediate impact to the city's portfolio. So we're going to continue to remain balanced, and this will allow the city to hang on to their interest income for as long as they have it. Obviously, we can't control interest rates. I wish we could. But the goal here is, as the environment changes, we want to try to be ahead of that and proactive as much as possible. So you'll see, the main takeaway is the weighted average yield in June was 4.27. It changed just a little bit to 4.20. So while the Fed cut a quarter percent, the city's portfolio did not see an immediate, immediate reduction. It will continue to move lower. So I'm not going to sit here and say it's going to stay there forever. As interest rates go lower, the city's yield will drop, but it's not going to drop at as fast of a pace as what the Fed is seeing, or Fed is doing. Lastly, here, just wrapping up, giving you a high-level snapshot of the city's portfolio. You'll see, we are continuing to remain balanced. So we want to make sure the city's liquidity needs are being met with those overnight funds. Also, inside of a year, as the city has debt service payments, we want to make sure those are being met. But as we have opportunities to reinvest, we'll be pushing funds out still into that three, four, or five-year area. Because if the Fed does continue to cut interest rates, even though rates are lower today, we still want to make sure we're buying those today. Because in a year from now, they could be much lower. So just remaining to be balanced. And one key item here is, year-to-date interest income at the end of the fiscal year was 11.3 million. So that's a great number for this fiscal year. And the goal, again, as I mentioned, is to hold on to that income and continue to generate a stable amount for you into the next couple of years. Any questions for me?
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Watching the yields drop, do you anticipate, if it continues, it will be more of a slope, having to adjust our investment strategy?
We're more taking more of a longer-term view. So not necessarily. I would say the liquidity needs drive the majority of our decision-making. Seasonally, right now, June to September, the city has more higher outflow periods. So we're going to naturally have to keep more in cash. So that drives a little more of the decision-making from the strategy. But from a longer-term picture, as rates continue to decline, we want to be longer. You want to be locking in for as much as you can. So naturally, we can't just take all of the money and push it longer. But it's going to be more of a balanced approach. How much liquidity, check that box first, and then from there, position longer to adjust the portfolio from that perspective.
Thank you.
Yep. Good question.
So once again, thank you so much for the day.
Awesome. No problem. Thank you all.
Happy holidays.
Yes, happy holidays to you too. Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 25186, Consider a Memorandum Resolution Awarding RFP 2538 Contract Generator Acquisition Maintenance Station Four to the Brant Companies LLC in the amount of $837,000.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Manager, City Council. This is a bit of an exciting one for us to bring to you today. We've been working on this for a little while. As you know, the newly-built Fire Station Four complex consists of two different buildings, Building A and Building B. And it houses four different functions: Fire Station Four, the Support Services Division, Office Homeland Security Emergency Management, and our Fire Training Academy. This was designed to incorporate two generators to ensure the continuous operation of the complex should we lose power for any reason. The generators will provide backup power to both structures. It would include all mechanical and IT infrastructure within the buildings, including that of the EOC, which we know is important. Staff sought and was awarded two grants under FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the purchase and installation of these generators. This has been ongoing for a little while. We had to have a scope change, because originally, it was just a single generator. Now we've moved to two generators. So with those delays and the grant awards not allowing for the generators to be installed during the construction of the complex, we continued to maintain the course and plan for those generators. So we did have the concrete pads and all of the underground piping completed during the original build. This is just for the generators and the surrounding, or the necessary wiring that's going to go with it. As you can see here, the generators will be located, one behind the Support Services building, and the second one right behind the Fire Station Four and EOC complex. So those will be the location of those two generators. The procurement process was followed. As you can see here, we did receive three contractors who attended the pre-bid meeting. We did receive our proposals on September 4, and those were open at 3:00 PM. And we did a thorough review of each bid. Bids were scored based on price, ability to complete the project within the grant performance period, expertise, and availability of resources. Generator lead times, in some cases with some bidders, are more than 52 weeks. So we did find that the bid submitted by Brant meets all of the requirements and is the best value for the city. Total cost of the acquisition and installation for the two generators, as proposed by Brant, is $837,000. And the total award for the grant was $845,000. The time and fund match as well. So that's the award and our fund match. Timeline proposed by Brant is within our performance period of the grant awards, which is also very important, that they can get these procured and installed and functional before the grant period ends with FEMA. So the cost for the Building A generator is $505,000, with grant funds being $404,000, and our city match is $101,000. And then for Building B, it's a smaller building, smaller generator, so that's why you see a lower amount there of $298,800 in grant, with our city match being $33,200. There are also different match percentages for each of the grants. One was a different city match versus the other one. So you'll see the percentages are different. And with that, staff recommends approval of the procurement today. Available for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Excellent presentation. Very thorough. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 25187, Consider a Memorandum Resolution Entering Into an Interlocal Agreement With the Hill Country Transit District to Provide For a Public Transportation System.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Cagle.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. And this is a pretty straightforward agenda item. The Texas Local Government Code authorizes governments to contract for these services. We don't have our own transportation system. But we do contract for the Hill Country Transit District, better known as the HOP. And cities of Copper's Cove, Harker Heights, and Colleen are in the Colleen Urbanized Zone area for federal funds in the formula funding process. The City Council approved funding for Hill Country Transit District in the 26 adopted budget in the amount of $650,000. This interlocal agreement is needed to provide for a public transportation system to be operated and managed by the Hill Country Transit District within the Colleen UZA. And here's the service area. And as you can see, as we had a presentation a few meetings ago, that within the same amount that we've budgeted, there's a little more covered area in the southwest part of town. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. There are no questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 25188, Consider a Memorandum Resolution Authorizing a Professional Services Agreement With Landscapes Unlimited for the renovation of the golf course irrigation system at Stone Tree Golf Club in the amount of $2,669,640.29.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mrs. Wilson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. All right. Well, as you recall, April 1 of 2025, the City Council authorized the issuance and sale of a combination tax and revenue CO Bond Series 2025 for capital projects to include golf course improvements. The bond funding for golf course improvements will be supported by golf course revenue. These improvements included the bunker renovation project, which is currently underway, and the irrigation system replacement that is for your consideration tonight. Through the TIPS Co-op Contract 230201, Landscapes Unlimited, they submitted a proposal for the irrigation system replacement. The Landscapes Unlimited proposal included a total cost of $2,669,640.29. The projected start date is January 4 of 2026, and we have about 120 working day timelines. And so as you recall from our prior discussion, we'll be closing nine holes at a time to complete the renovation on one side, and then we'll move to the other side. So we'll limit disruption to play wherever possible. The new irrigation system will connect to the reuse water tank approved by council on July 15 of this year, and will allow the course to be irrigated solely by reuse water. The reuse tank is currently under construction and will be completed by or well before the completion of the irrigation system. So I'm here for any questions. Tonight, we're just asking for a recommendation, or we're providing a recommendation that City Council authorize the city manager or his designee to sign a letter of agreement with Landscapes Unlimited in the amount of $2,669,640.29 to renovate the golf course irrigation system at Stone Tree.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you. Questions?
No questions. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
OR 25015, Consider an Ordinance Imending Chapters Seven, Twelve, and Thirty-One of the Code of Ordnances by consolidating certain appeals and adjustment boards into a single Board of Adjustment.
Thank you. Attorney Clemens?
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, ma'am. Good to see you again.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This is your Board of Adjustment item. So a little bit of background, currently, the city has four distinct citizen boards that here decide appeals to building official decisions, variance requests, special exceptions, and things of that nature. The four different boards we're talking about are the Construction Board, the Zoning Board, the Aviation and Fire Board of Adjustments. In September of this year, council was unable to fill all positions with the Zoning Board of Adjustment due to low application numbers. We began looking at options. We have these four different Board of Adjustments and options to consolidate these. In October, on October 21 of this year, council directed staff to bring amendment to the Code of Ordnance to consolidate into one single Board of Adjustment. So the proposed amendments that are before you in this item are changes to Chapters Seven, Twelve, and Thirty-One that would consolidate the four boards and create the single board. The amendments would place the responsibilities of the four boards under the Single Board of Adjustment. And corresponding changes are being recommended to you in a later item today to Chapter Eight and Chapter Eleven that are included in the International Code Ordinance. So you'll be hearing about that next. But the new Board of Adjustment would be comprised of nine members. So the recommendation is that the four members have construction and building experience, one member with aviation experience, one with fire suppression and prevention experience, and then three citizens at large. And then also that you And then also that you appoint two alternate members that would be at large positions as well. So with that, the staff recommends that Council approve the amendments as presented.
Thank you, Attorney Clemens. That is a great job. You took a directive from the Council, and you really, you really put that together really well. Thank you. Great job. Great job. Mayor Protem.
Thanks, Mayor. I had just a couple of questions that were, one that I had, I just want to make sure that we are still covering the functions and the state requirements for all the other, those other boards as the Texas Code requires.
So the Texas, the Texas Codes, as you're saying, do not have the requirements. The requirements of the particular boards right now come from what's in the International Codes and what's in our Code, in our Code of Ordinances. And those are the things that are being amended by these ordinances. So the international, the requirements that are in the International Codes, that will come to you in the ordinance, in the ordinance after this one, and then the changes to those requirements and qualifications. What we're doing is we're taking a mixture of all of those requirements with, normally with the Construction Board, you have the construction and building experience requirements. With the Fire Board, you need fire experience. Aviation, with aviation experience, we're combining that, that experience into one board with those requirements, and we're changing the requirements to, to match that in the, in those sections. State law itself, Texas law, does not have those qualifications. It's in International Codes and the Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. I just wanted to make, because I had questions asked of me, just wanted you to put that out there before we want to grasp. Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Very questioning, Mayor Protem. That's a good job. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Madam City Secretary, whenever you're ready.
Yes, ma'am. And the next three items will be presented by Ms. Mesher, so I will read them into the record.
Yes, ma'am.
OR 25016, consider an ordinance amending Colleen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 8, Building and Construction Regulations, and Chapter 11, Fire Prevention and Protection, to adopt the 2024 International Code, Council Construction Codes, 2024 International Fire Code, 2023 National Electrical Code, and local amendments to the Colleen Code of Ordinances, Chapters 8, Building and Construction Regulations, and Chapter 11, Fire Code. Next item, PH 25071, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the City of Colleen Code of Ordinances by prohibiting the open storage of nuisance vehicles and updating the junk vehicle ordinance. PH 25072, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Cecilia Leon on behalf of Tong Min and Claudia Lizeth Kelm, case number Z2535, to rezone part of Lot 1, Block 11, out of the Colleen Original Edition from B5 Business District with HOD Historic Overlay District to BC1 General Business and Alcohol Sales District with HOD Historic Overlay District. The subject property is locally addressed as 301 East Avenue D, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mrs. Mesher.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This first item is an ordinance adopting the new international building codes and fire codes. It's not, this, this is not on. Sorry. There we go. I apologize. So currently, the City of Colleen is on the 2021 IBC and the 2020 National Electric Code. And the proposal tonight is to adopt the 2024 International Building Codes and the 2023 National Electric Code. The proposed ordinance has an effective date of January 1st of next year. Currently, Harker Heights and Hutto are on the 2024 Codes and the 2023 NEC Code. Cedar Park is on the 2021 Codes and the 2020 NEC Code. Georgetown is on the 2021 and 2023. Leander, same. Waco is still on the 2018 Codes, and Temple on the 2015 Codes and the 2017 National Electric Code. Marble Falls plans to adopt the new codes and, the 2024 Codes this year, and Copper's Cove is also in the process of reviewing to adopt those. The purpose of adopting new codes is to provide up-to-date, high-quality codes, standards and products in which to construct, improve the health, safety, and general welfare of our citizens by creating safer buildings, improve the standards for energy efficiency, and maintain or improve our ISO rating. So this is a breakdown of the City of Colleen's past ISO Building Code Effectiveness Scores. Grading scores are between 1 and 10, with 1 being the best and 10 being the worst. So you can see our, our rating has, has gone down over time and is actually better than the state average of 6 for residential and 6 for commercial. So we're right now at 4 for residential and 4 for commercial. Public hearing on the proposed changes was held on October 16th with approximately 22 attendees. Staff presented 40, over 40 significant code changes affecting construction. So I have, I have some slides summarizing the significant code amendments. I'll go through these pretty quickly. But with regard to residential building code changes, there are changes regarding smoke alarms, sleeping loft construction, garages related to electric vehicle charging station requirements, solar energy systems. And then with regard to the estimated cost of compliance, the City of Harker Heights reports that moving to the 2024 code is a cost savings, and that Home Innovation Research Labs reported in July of 2024 that cost savings are estimated between $13 and $2,154 by moving to the new 2024 codes. With regard to commercial code changes, there are changes regarding mechanical, electrical, plumbing controls, concealed spaces, residential smoke alarms, carbon monoxide, handrails, interior space dimensions. And then on the National Electric Code, changes are related to GFCI protection and branch circuits. We're also proposing minor text amendments in Chapter 8 regarding interactive voice response, the Construction Board of Appeals, and contractor liability insurance. In addition to that, the Chapter 11 of the Code of Ordinances is being, is proposed to be amended to require new buildings or structures greater than 12,000 square feet to install an automatic fire suppression system. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the ordinance as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
There are no questions. Great job.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This ordinance is an ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to junk vehicles. This does require a public hearing because it, it has a fee, fees associated with it. So during their 88th regular session, the Texas Legislature passed House Bill 3297, which abolished the vehicle safety inspection requirement for non-commercial vehicles. So effective January 1st of this year, Chapter 548 of the Texas Transportation Code was amended, removing vehicle safety inspections for most passenger vehicles and allowing vehicles to be registered without undergoing vehicle safety inspections, thus potentially allowing the registration of vehicles that may have been previously classified as junk vehicles. So the proposed amendments to Chapter 18 are intended to address the changes made by the legislature and allow the city to identify and address the open storage of nuisance vehicles and provide a penalty for doing so. So staff is proposing several amendments to Chapter 18, including changing the definition of a junk vehicle by removing language relating to the vehicle safety inspection, and adding a definition of vehicle to mean any passenger or cargo vehicle, including all train vehicles, boats, personal water crafts, and adding a new definition of nuisance vehicle to mean any vehicle that is wrecked, dismantled, or partially dismantled, discarded, substantially disfigured, damaged, disintegrated, ruined, destroyed, or demolished, or unattended on jackstands, blocks, or other means, so that the vehicle is not supported by its wheels, or in a condition with one or more flat tires or is missing one or more wheels, or that is inoperable or has, and has remained inoperable for more than 72 hours upon public property or 30 consecutive days upon private property. So we're also adding and declaring that this new definition of a nuisance vehicle is detrimental to the safety and welfare of the public, invites vandalism, and is considered a public nuisance. We are also changing the abatement enforcement designee from the building official to the Executive Director of Development Services or designee, and adding nuisance vehicles to the relocation regulations, ensuring that they remain as such regardless of their location and city limits. So with that, staff finds that the amendments to Chapter 18 are necessary to address the open storage of nuisance vehicles, and we're recommending approval as presented. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. I have one quick question. You probably stated it, and I missed it. Within the 72 hours, for instance, we go to Councilmember Alvarez's home, and he has a, oh, just throwing that out there. And he just so happened to have a vehicle with missing two wheels, and it's been up there for a while because me, I complained about it. So I go by Code Enforcement, which would be Councilman Solomon, because he enforce everything, and him and Councilmember Segarra go by there, right? So, and they're with Code Enforcement. So they tell him, hey, that vehicle needs to be taken care of in 72 hours.
So it's 72 hours if on public property, or 30 consecutive days if on private property.
Oh, Lord, that's kind of long. But I do know, understand. So the 30 days are up. What happens next? They get a fine?
If it's been more than 30 days and it's on private property, it's considered a junk vehicle.
And do they have to remove it, or can we? I'm just asking because I didn't hear, and I don't know. And I say I cannot do anything about it, don't have the money, blah, blah. What happens then?
So if it's, if it's more than 30 days on private property, in order to come into compliance, the vehicle needs to be either stored in a garage where it's not visible or, or removed from the property. So at that point, if it's, if it's considered a junk vehicle, the property owner either needs to come into compliance, or they'll receive a citation.
Okay. And they get a citation until they come into compliance? Correct, sir? Sir, would you introduce your name, please?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Jerry Miller, Director of Code Enforcement. Ultimately, Ms. Mesher is correct in that, but the other option for that, other than the citation, and the, the individual abating it themselves, is actually us, Code Enforcement of the City of baiting the vehicle, will remove the vehicle from the property.
Okay. Okay. All right. And I said she probably said it, I just missed it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you both. But we do have several questions, and I think I should not have asked that question. Now look at this, this board here. So we have Councilmember Kendrick, Mayor Protem Adams. Councilmember, thank you Alvarez for letting me use you as an example, example. And we have Councilwoman Gonzalez. So Councilmember Kendrick, that floor is yours.
Okay. I know we just, you just talked about boats. What are we going to do about trailers? It's not mentioned in here.
That's good.
Correct. Trailers are actually, parking of trailers, there's actually a different set of regulations that enforces parking of trailers. So we will handle those under, under that situation. We typically don't abate trailers, and if, obviously, if the trailer's in the street, then it becomes a police department issue, and we work closely with them to get those, those vehicles out of the street, excuse me, those trailers out of the streets. So ultimately, they can be abated, but it is a different set of regulations for the trailers.
Okay. And also with this, you said after 30 days, if it, if the vehicle hasn't been moved and they get that, that fine from Code Enforcement, how, how long will a citizen have to get that squared away? Is there a drop-dead time, or can you just keep every 30 days fining them?
So once, once we've identified it as a junk vehicle, keep in mind that the nuisance vehicle ordinance that we're wishing to change to, it doesn't come with an abatement option on that, because the state allows and disallows certain things when it comes to junk vehicles within the state of Texas. So ultimately, with the junk vehicle regulation, once it's identified as a junk vehicle, the onus is on the property owner to prove that it is not, and at which time they have 10 days to remove it. But it has to remain and be, remained on property in 430 days to be considered a junk vehicle. But once it is identified after that 30 days, then they have 10 days to remove it from public view, repair the vehicle. They can obviously bring it into compliance by repairing the vehicle, or we will indeed come and abate the vehicle at that point. We do work with citizens. Should they have issues or their situations where they're waiting on a title, and we understand that, we, we will work with the citizens on that.
That was going to lead right into my next question.
Yes, sir.
Because we have service members that deploy all the time.
Correct.
I just think they need, maybe if something happens with them and they're deployed, they need a little extra time to make sure they, they can fall within compliance. And I know that'd be a case-by-case deal, but I just want to make sure.
And I don't want to say a lot of times with that, if there's a roommate at the house, you know what I'm saying, they can help us address the situation, communicate back and forth to service member. Some of the single service members as well, I mean, and I'm aged myself here, but we would also, they store them in the motor pools, you know what I'm saying, while they're deployed for a certain amount of time. So those options are there too, but absolutely, we'll work with them as long as we can.
Okay.
There's no way to know, unfortunately, that it is a service member's vehicle when we, when we start the process.
That's all my questions right now.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any waivers? Did we put waivers or exemptions inside the ordinance? I don't remember seeing.
No, sir.
Oh, it just goes back to state law?
Correct. Yes, sir.
What about, can the vehicle be covered and be considered, like you put a, a top or what have you on it?
No, sir.
Okay.
At this point, it's got to be completely removed from public view.
At, once it gets the citation.
Correct. And there's other areas of the ordinance that allows it to be parked in the backyard if it's not a public health and safety issue, avoids the all-weather service. So there's exceptions throughout the ordinance, but not specifically in, in this section.
When we proceed to remove from the property, does that require any court, like the judge to sign a removal?
No, sir.
Okay. And then I know you mentioned, Ms. Wallace, you mentioned, Ms. Mesher, excuse me, fines? I didn't see the schedule of fines that...
So the, the ordinance addresses fines, it, I apologize, I don't have it in front of me.
The ordinance, as revised, references back to Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances, which is our standard provisions for what fines are. It, it references back to our standard provisions for criminal enforcement.
Got it. Thanks. And then we collect the vehicles, and let's say we, you, you just go out and just start taking vehicles, or where are we putting them, and what happened? What's the disposition?
So once the 10 days has been surpassed, we hire, we have a rotation list of towing companies within the city. Those vehicles go to the towing yard, and they remain at the towing yard until Code Enforcement staff sends in the form to TechDOT. The vehicle becomes the City of Colleen's vehicle. We take ownership of said vehicle. Once we have that, Ms. Mesher actually signs off on that vehicle title, and we hand that ownership of that vehicle over to that wrecker service or that, that towing company, and it becomes theirs, and they are allowed to either completely demolish the vehicle or allowed to sell it as parts for junkyard, scrapyards, reuse, those kind of things. But once it is taken, that vehicle is taken as is considered as soon as I turn that piece of paper into the state. It belongs to the City of Colleen until we transfer title to the towing company. That vehicle does not go back to the property owner.
Got it. And so that leads to this next question.
Yes, sir.
Because we've gotten these complaints before, and these, I know a couple of times since I've been on council with garages that have vehicles they've been working on for a minute.
Absolutely.
Does that apply to them as well?
The junk vehicle ordinance, the nuisance vehicle ordinance, absolutely does.
Okay.
They understand when we have to address those situations that they have to be screened from public view as well.
Okay. And then the last question, I think Attorney May after, I know under, most of us have served Soldier Sellers Relief Act, does that, once we figure out whether a vehicle's owned by a service member, does that come to play, or is for removal of it? Because I keep, I know cities can't take any action on.
As the ordinance is written right now, no, sir. There's no exemptions or anything in there. Again, there's no way for us to tell when we start the process that it is, is owned by a service member. But if it is communicated with us, then we can obviously work with the individuals, try to figure out, you know, through next, next of kin, excuse me, family members, roommates, things of that nature, to assist them.
All right. Appreciate that. Thanks.
Oh, Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. And I wanted to, you guys probably covered this, but I wanted to clarify for the public that the city's junk vehicle ordinance is not something that was created by the city. It exactly mirrors verbatim the state of Texas's Transportation Code, Section 683. So this is not something that the City of Colleen made up. This is, goes by state standards, Section 683. It details what a junk vehicle is. It details what a junk vehicle is, how it's removed, what the city can and can't do with it, and how the vehicle has to be disposed of. So again, this is not something that the City of Colleen just made up. And the city cannot be less stringent than the state, it's not allowed. The city can be more stringent, meaning if we wanted to give the public less days, we could give them less days, but we cannot give them more days. That's prohibited by state law. You cannot be less stringent than the state. And we, we came across this all the time when I worked in, in Code Enforcement. You know, the majority of times, if, if someone cares for a vehicle, whether they're working on it or not, as long as they maintain an active registration sticker on it, or if they can turn it on and prove that the vehicle runs and drives, and they can move it back and forth, then it, it's normally fine. So the issue becomes when these vehicles are sitting in residential areas or anywhere throughout the city where they've been inoperable, dismantled for years upon years. I remember when I was in Code Enforcement, we would look at Google Earth data from the 80s, and some of these vehicles had been there since the 80s. So, you know, if it's something that you care about, I don't think that I would leave a vehicle that I cared about in that condition since the 80s, just out in the yard. I would probably have it in the garage, which then removes it from, from this code, if it's completely stored indoors, if it's not visible from public view. So again, that's one, I think it's important to clarify that for the public, that this is not something that the city has made up, that this mirrors the State of Texas's Transportation Code. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam. Just for clarity, it was mentioned that once it's tagged for 30 days, correct? What is the remedy for the homeowner? What is their option if they want to dispute this? What's that process look like?
So ultimately, on the 11th, before, prior to the 11th day of notice, so we've noticed that the vehicle's been sitting there for 30 days, then we can address it or identify it as a junk vehicle. Notice goes out to the property owner. The property owner has before the 11th day that the notice is sent to request a hearing. Currently, the hearing is with the building official, because at one time, the building official was dual-hatting it as a building official and the director of Code Enforcement, and he still steps in, Mr. Abbott, and he's here, steps in and assists, because the ordinance clearly states it is the building official that does that, which we're, we're changing that to. So they, they request a hearing, and it's determined at that point in time whether that vehicle does indeed meet the junk vehicle definition, and if so, the vehicle's ordered removed. At that point, we can give them additional time to help work through the process, but at that point, prior to that 11th day, they can request that hearing through our city staff. Hopefully, we can get that to Ms. Mesher or the Executive Director of Development Services or Designee, so it's not very specific, but that's the remedy at this point.
Okay. And if there is a voluntary, involuntary abatement, which we talked about, who covers that cost? What does that process look like for the homeowner?
So currently, there is no, for instance, on, on standard abatements and stuff, we pay a contractor that's hired through us to perform said work, and then we send the bill to the property owner, and ultimately, we can recover that, or we can place a lien on the property. This is very different than that, and the junk vehicles, we don't pay the towing company to come get it, their payment is the vehicle, and there's no restitution back to the city from the property owner. We do believe that it's, once that vehicle is taken, that's, that's the, the payment essentially for that. We do not request any restitution on the junk vehicles.
Sure.
As we don't pay a contractor.
Understood, thank you. And with this type of change, just to ensure, as we're always talking about transparency with our constituents, what is the rollout plan for the public awareness campaign with the change to an ordinance like this? I understand it as a state standard, and that's fine. We're making some modifications, and, and we have to deal with those as they, as they come, but how are we going to let the public know so that everyone is on the same page? Obviously, if they're in the middle of a, a situation, they know what's going on, right? But what is our plan for rollout for communication to our constituents?
I, currently, we don't have a definitive plan, but the intent is moving forward, is working with communications, either put a public information notice out, or do another video, so we can actually work on educating the citizens on the, the ordinance change.
Outstanding, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we do have three actors on this, on this digest that'd be part of vehicle, starting with Councilmember Alvarez. With that being said, Councilmember Kendrick, I'm going to have to hold on you and tell Councilmember Solomon go, because you have already spoken. I'll come back to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam.
Councilmember Solomon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to ask Mr. Miller, how is the vehicles identified? I mean, will, can a resident, will a resident be able to call in and say, hey, I got a neighbor that has a junk vehicle? Or do y'all drive around and identify the vehicles?
All of the above. The same way we do with any other violation of the, the city code. It can be reported through reporter concern, it can be reported by the phone call or Code Enforcement email, word of mouth. We've actually find violations on social media. We see it on all the various social media pages, and then we are a little bit proactive and say, hey, did you see this? Let's go out and let's address this, you know, since we have a citizen concern. Or we get phone calls from various city staff, management, and council. So there's several different options to report that. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cobb or Councilmembers Segarra, would you like to speak for Kendrick? No, ma'am? Okay, sir, the floor is yours.
I, I wanted to make sure, we said, you said it would go to a towing yard, but also inside of the, the change, I think it says scrapyard. There's a difference in the two?
There, there is. There, there absolutely is. So the tow yard typically is that, that's where they're going to set that, and the vehicle's going to stay in that location. A lot of your tow companies, they have impound yards, you know, and they could be at various locations. We have some that actually are a scrapyard and a tow company, so they have both, the, the tow companies. But once that title is handed over to the towing company, then it moves forward to the scrap, um, scrapyard, and they can do with it as they wish. They could either demolish it completely, or they could sell it for parts and whatever is outlined.
That's the only thing they can do is sell it for parts. They cannot...
Or scrap it completely.
But, but I think by the law, they cannot fix the vehicle up and then sell it as a whole.
Once it is identified as a junk vehicle, that vehicle is a junk vehicle forever. It's actually a different title that we get back from the state of Texas as well.
Check. That's all.
So that'll be found in any future purchases of that vehicle too.
Is that it? Councilmember Kendrick?
Yeah.
Okay. Sir, I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just listening to each council member that I didn't hear. They asked a question, but it was never answered, to my knowledge. But I could be wrong. The tarp over the vehicle?
Correct.
So if I'm driving by, and I see one, I'm not going to raise it up to see if it's, okay?
No, ma'am.
Just that, I don't want people just go out there, we should probably say that, they could probably buy a lot of them, just sew them on their cars if they're not working.
So, so when, when I do say that, that we don't allow a tarp to cover a junk vehicle, that is meaning, once it has been identified as a junk vehicle, that is not sufficiently removing that from public view. So if we're driving down the road, excuse me, if we're driving down the road, and ultimately we see a vehicle that's junk, we're not going to allow them to hide the violation.
Okay.
But if there's a vehicle that's consistently under a tarp, and it does not appear to be junk, we don't have the authority, U.S. Constitution, that, you know...
Correct.
The Fourth Amendment prevents, that's illegal search and seizure. We're not going to go onto private property and actually pull the tarps and look for that kind of stuff. Poker heads over fences, no, ma'am, we can't do that.
Yes, sir. I just want to say, I know it's a lot of questions, but it was so much detail...
Yes, ma'am.
That needed to be shared with the public.
Yes, ma'am, I agree.
You was extremely detailed, and I thank you for that. And Councilwoman Gonzalez, I think we all can agree with you, the public must know this, because we're going to receive the call, staff's going to receive the call, but Code Enforcement have done an excellent job, your, your team do, and it's just one more tool in the box...
Thank you, ma'am.
...to assist. Great job, Ms. Mesher. Two thumbs up on that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
This next item is a request to rezone, whoops, keeps turning itself off. There we go. Sorry about that. This is a, a request to rezone the property at 301 East Avenue D from B5 to BC1. The underlying zoning from B5 to BC1. This area is with, located within the historic overlay district, so it does have an overlay designation of HOD. Subject property, as I said, is within the HOD, and if approved, the applicant intends to operate a bar with a concept similar to a speakeasy at this location. The red star indicates the location of that property. This is an aerial of the property. As you can see, it's located, it's a building located on the northeast corner of North Gray and East Avenue D. This is a view of the front of that property. It's the small gray building in the center. This is a view from the subject property facing south on North Gray Street, view of the adjacent property to the west, view from the subject property facing north. Property is located within the infill and enhance area on the growth sector map and designated as urban village on the future land use map. We notified 69 surrounding property owners, and we have received no responses. This is the notification boundary map. Staff does find that the applicant's request will have no negative impact on the surrounding properties, and that we're therefore recommending approval as presented. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of four to one with Commissioner Sabree voting in opposition. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, there are no questions. We will now go into citizen comments. Michael Fornino. Michael Fornino. Melissa Brown.
You haven't filled all of your boards, not due to a complete lack of qualified applications, it's due to a lack of applications of people you like. I know, because some of these boards that are left unfilled, I personally have applied for, and wasn't considered for even the ones that are at large positions and not requiring any area of special, area of expertise. Mayor's had an application for a resident person who lives and had housing for KHA and hasn't filled it. So it's not about whether or not you have the applications coming in, it's about filling them with people, even if you don't like that individual as a person. The changes to the International Code are apparently only made when they benefit the city. Otherwise, that International Code is used to go after citizens. Part of the recommended changes are under Chapter 31, and as per Chapter 31, any changes to that chapter should come up for a public hearing item. The state law does require that each case before a board of adjustment must be heard by 75% of the board, and it has to be passed three quarters in favor of. The 75% hearing is per the Texas Local Government Code 211008E. We can barely make quorum at a lot of board meetings, P and Z being one of them, so I don't know what makes you think you're going to be able to make quorums for these. And then you could just expect more judicial reviews by mixing the expertise, because now we're taking people who are from different areas of expertise, and we're trying to smash them into one board. So you've got someone who is going to be a fire expertise, that's now going to be deciding on energy preservation and aviation, someone from aviation deciding on electrical and whether or not the zoning is proper. It doesn't make any sense. Why are we requiring proof of insurance with construction permits before their application is considered? That is a private company or person or entity working on their own property. As far as the children's museum, I have three words, Rosa Herford Center. The cost, the length of time, all of the additional things, and not to mention the fact that half of the city council told us renovating these school buildings is not viable, because if they, if we were to do that, then all we would be doing is spending more money than building something brand new. And the same thing goes for the fire station on Avenue D. Instead of selling that, which it's not going to go for much, it's going to require millions of dollars in renovations, let's take the CDBG money that we're going to hear about later, add that with the money that we have set aside already in the CIP, and then we could either use that to make this a station that could be used for an ambulance.
Thank you for your time, Ms. ...
May I have one more minute, please?
Councilmember Alvarez. Councilmember Solomon. Council, Councilmember Segarra. Councilmember Kendrick. Four noes. Michael Fornino.
This is why you're being rerequiem, Congresswoman.
Good afternoon, sir, you have three minutes.
Children's Museum, anything to take focus away from no grocery store or these wonderful community gardens, huh? City manager, any job, big or small, do it right or not at all. When it comes to his performance, mayor said at the last meeting, everyone has a pass. The word is passed with a T. However, let's use that word correctly. That's all you folks have given him in his entire tenure here, is a pass. A council member was quoted in the paper this past Sunday with weak sauce of rhetoric with no evidence. Well, let's examine that evidence with regard to his lack of performance. He can't even have muster the courage to look at me while I'm talking about him. Says a lot about his character, which is also a question. Stagecoach Road, Watercrest, Bunny Trail, Gilmore, the evidence is right there. You can't send out nice messages from the Communications Department and tell us that he's doing a good job. He's not. Way over budget, way past schedule, and yet, to you folks, considering giving him a raise and a rousing performance bonus, for what? He doesn't walk on water, unless he's walking across some of the flooding that consistently happens around here. He's a reflection of you. You don't want to listen to us. Where, where is his performance? We're constantly hearing presentations that compare us to other cities, as you love to when convenient, tell us that we're the 17th largest city in, in Texas, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Why should we compare ourselves to smaller cities? They should be comparing themselves to us. That doesn't happen. He complains, oh, well, Georgetown or other little hamlets here and there, desirable places to live with jobs. Where are they, Mr. Cagle? We don't seem to have any. Even the intrepid reporter from the Colleen Daily Herald, which is by and large an apologist organization for you folks, had to admit that going to the homeless shelter, speaking to, and when I say the least of us, I don't mean that as a disparaging remark against them. But those who have nothing, one of their major complaints, they don't have jobs, they don't have opportunity. The cast changes from time to time, very little, musical chairs, but the script doesn't. Thomas Sowell, Deming, you are not. Maybe you should consider some of Deming's points, point number two, embrace new ideas. The way you've been doing it all this time ain't working. It's not working for us, the taxpayer, and it's not working for this city moving it forward.
Thank you, sir. We will now go into our regular session. Madam Secretary, Concern Agenda.
Lmen 25029, Lmen 25030, RS 25185, RS 25186, RS 25187, RS 25188, OR 25015. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending Chapters 7, 12, and 31 of the City of Colleen Code of Ordinances, repealing certain appeals and adjustments, boards, creating a board of adjustment, providing severability clause, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date." And OR 25016, the caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending Chapters 8 and 11 of the City of Colleen Code of Ordinances, adopting the 2024 International Construction Codes, the 2024 International Fire Code, and the 2023 National Electrical Code, adopting local amendments to these codes, terminating related boards, and reassigning duties to a single board of adjustment, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting..." clause, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you. Councilmember Solomon.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, concern agenda.
Sir? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Did you say something? Councilmember Solomon, did you make a motion?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear that. It's my ear.
It's okay.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I move to second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Thank you, Councilwoman Cobb. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready, we'll have our council member request for future agenda items.
Uh, Madam Mayor, apologies, but we're next on the public hearing items again.
I'm sorry. I jumped on.
You're okay.
Sorry.
You're fine.
I get happy.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I'll start with, uh, P H twenty-five zero-seven-one.
Yes, ma'am.
Hold a, yes, ma'am. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending chapter eighteen of the City of Colleen Code of Ordinances by prohibiting the open storage of nuisance vehicles and updating the junk vehicle ordinance. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending chapter eighteen of the City of Colleen Code of Ordinances, making the open storage of nuisance vehicles unlawful, providing a penalty, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you. Council Mrs. Mesher has gone through the slides. Would you like for her to go back through? Thank you so much. Public, the public hearing is open. There's no one signed up.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I just received a form from, uh, Ms. Melissa Brown.
You have, uh, three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Cagle. Thank you, Madam Secretary, for catching that.
So there is no way, uh, for anybody to guarantee that a service member is going to get a notification before their vehicle is towed, uh, much less before it is removed from their property. If they make it back in time, uh, they would have to then pay the tow fees and they would have to pay all the storage fees, or the city's going to have to cover that cost. If not, they stand a chance of coming back and their vehicle has already been torn apart, um, and junked or just junked completely. Um, the ordinance will no longer exactly follow the state, uh, code, and a nuisance vehicle is something that could be, uh, decided on subjectively. We're taking thirty days allowance for a project vehicle or a race vehicle in someone's private property and reducing that down to fifteen days. Uh, junked vehicles do require a judicial order, otherwise you're coming in, you're taking without a warrant. Um, and there is going to be a difference between junked and nuisance vehicles right are now under the proposed changes. Actually, in looking through this ordinance change, the ordinance change that you just approved, uh, in twenty-five dash zero-one-six, there's a whole lot of changes that were not in the presentation, and I'm not sure that any of the council members took the time to read through what all of those changes are. I would say this, that in, I find this to be very, uh, convenient and funny time. I will admit that the city has targeted me a couple of times for a vehicle that I have in my own driveway. There is no requirement legally for me to drive a vehicle that I own. If I want to let it sit there for a year, I can let it sit there for a year. If it doesn't look pretty, so be it. That doesn't mean anything. So what did I do? I went and got it registered. Now the city all of a sudden is coming up with this change. Isn't that funny? All right, but let's talk about this. They're going to take away the requirement for vehicles to be registered and say, we can now declare it to be a nuisance vehicle, even if it has proper registration, which does it also require me to have insurance on it because I can't register a vehicle that's not insured. Is detrimental to the safety and welfare of the public, tends to reduce the value of private property. Well, that's subjective. Invites vandalism. I'll tell you that not a single time has any vehicle that I've seen invited vandalism just because there's a car there. Creates a fire hazard, is an attractive nuisance, creating a hazard to health and safety of minors, produces urban blight, adversely maintenance and continuing development of the city, and is a public nuisance. That word "and" there means that it must meet all of the above requirements. Let people have their own property, stop messing with that, and worry about the things that really matter. Worry about the things that are really going to affect whether or not the city is able to continue to expand and develop properly. Let's worry about public safety because my car and my driveway doesn't have anything to do with public safety.
Your time is up. Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Uh, Mr. Reynolds, I would like to, uh, bring up your two staff members because there are some really concerns I have, if that's okay with you. Uh, Mr. Jerry, I saw you shaking your head. Uh, Ms. Mesher, would y'all please come? Uh, there was some information that was put out, uh, that I needed to be clarified, especially if I, uh, men and women that are in uniform, I really don't want them to be concerned if they just don't have family members here. Uh, Councilmember Ramon Alvarez, which was, uh, used to be on code enforcement, shared a lot of knowledge, uh, with us from the inside of how it works. And you did say that you would work with people, and there was a lot of things that were stated that you heard too, and I guess that's why you were shaking your head. Uh, can we clarify the military first and anything else that you want to make sure is correct or did we miss something either or? Would you please do that?
So, I'm going to move this up. Just to clarify that, you're correct. There is no way that we can verify that the individual, we verify the ownership of it, obviously, through various, uh, means and resources, but to determine what their...
Active duty or not.
Whether they're active duty or not, or what their profession is in general, that, that it's impossible to do so unless we know, you know what I'm saying, from speaking to a neighbor, from speaking to somebody that's out there at the house as well. Um, when I was active duty, it was always important to get my affairs in order prior to leaving. So if I knew that I was going to be gone just for six, just to sake of argument for six months, I would ensure that my vehicle was going to, registration was going to expire in that timeframe, I would take care of that and do my due diligence to make sure that my house and my vehicle, my property is squared away prior to leaving, or make those arrangements for somebody else to do so.
Yes, sir.
As far as the comment, just if I, if I may just continue with the other, the other comment.
Yes, sir. Just with the military, you, just, I want to make that clear. We're not targeting, not the military or anyone.
Absolutely. No, we're not targeting anybody. We're targeting the vehicle itself.
You don't have to continue, but if you want to, it's up to you.
Yes, ma'am. There, there was just another comment made, um, about requiring a judicial order, and that is absolutely a hundred percent the case. Every, um, junk vehicle we take or any abatement that we perform in the City of Colleen, we do get an administrative warrant from the municipal court judge, from Judge Krishna, prior to entering the property and, uh, removing said vehicle. So yes, there is absolutely a hundred percent we do, uh, get a warrant, administrative warrant every time we do any abatement within the City of Colleen.
All right. Ms. Mesher?
Very few.
Want to add something or not?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, with that, council members, we have two would like to ask you questions. Uh, Councilmember Kendrick.
Uh, I know we talked about, um, there is no way to find out, um, whether or not they are active duty. Um, I think actually there is a way, um, and we, I, I just want to make sure our service members are taken care of.
Absolutely.
And the way of doing it, posts, they have to register their vehicles on post too. So there's, there's a way to where it may mean more work, but I just think with the number of soldiers that's here, we need to find a way, if it does pertain to a service member, that we do everything that we can to ensure that the service member doesn't lose their vehicle. So I think there's a way of making that.
And we can research more and more determining whether there is something available to be able to...
Yes, sir. And with that said, if it's more work, um, we really, we're really stretched thin, uh, and we could possibly find, uh, Mr. Reynolds will be the best person to answer how they can accommodate that with personnel, their employees, or if, how we, how do we do with council members? That's something you want to see. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Uh, yes. I, I, I just, um, I, I know a lot of people, they, they move around, they go on field training exercises, which most of the times, I know when I went on a field training exercise, I didn't do no power attorney for people that was back there. Um, I would, I did have a power attorney, but, um, for a field training exercise, even if they're N T C or out at Fort Hood ranges, they could be out there for thirty days and not get anything. So I'm just trying to think, is there a way?
Okay. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Reynolds.
And, uh, I think that we're getting off the beaten path. I do, uh, we, uh, nobody on staff wants to target a soldier. Um, nobody wants to target a soldier. I'm a retired soldier myself. Um, but we do have to have ordinance that keep our city looking a certain way. What do we want the city to look like? Um, so we're going to go out here, we're going to do our due diligence, the staff is going to do, do diligence, as code enforcement always do, and work with people to get this abated, taken care of without having to take anyone's property. That's not our, that's not the meaning of this, of this ordinance, as Mr. Councilman Alvarez stated, this is state law, this is, we're following the law here. And we, we're doing ordinances to make sure for every person that, um, that live next door to a, a vehicle that's abandoned, uh, or, or neglected vehicle or nuisance vehicle, they're calling in and talking about this. So what about the neighbor that lives next to your door? We got to look at this as a holistic, uh, uh, effort here to make sure we clean up our city, just as we do when we're baiting, uh, high grass and weeds or abandoned buildings and dilapidated buildings. We have to decide as a, as a body, as a city, what we want the city to look like. And that's what these ordinances are designed to do, is to help make the city look like a place that people want to live. We want our soldiers to want to live here and represent for the City of Colleen. We are the City of Colleen, so we have to look at it from that vantage point. Nobody on staff is going to be targeting soldiers or anybody. Uh, we see an abandoned vehicle out there, we're going to work with that property owner to make sure we do our due diligence before we go just snatch the vehicle. We will do that. We've always done that. We'll continue to do that, but we will make sure we're communicating with folks, you know. We do recognize the concerns of valid concerns. We live in a military community. We are very cognizant of that, uh, but we also have to make sure we have a community that military wants to be in. There are a lot of dignitaries that come to this community all the time to visit Fort Hood, being the second largest military installation in the world, and, uh, we need to make sure the city looks like a place that they want to stay, uh, for a night or for two nights or for the rest of their lives, as I've chosen to do. So let's make sure we keep that in mind as well.
Yes, sir. And Councilmember, um, Kendrick, I don't know if you would think about this, but one other way we can resolve it, uh, your concerns, is that once this ordinance is, if Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Cagle don't mind and legal, if they say it's okay, once this ordinance have been voted on and typed up and everything, they can share this with the Garrison Sergeant, Major, and Commander, and they can push it down to, hey, we know y'all be a N T C or short deployment from thirty to forty-five days to sixty. Your ties and everything may go on flat, and they don't know it because it's just been sitting there. Um, but as long as we share that information with Fort Hood and, and they pass it down, once we do our part, then it's their responsibility to share with the soldiers and family members. If that would be something, uh, Mr. Cagle and, uh, uh, Mr. Reynolds and the city attorney, if we, it's even feasible to meet Councilmember Kendrick, uh, concerns. Even code enforcement, somebody can...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think sharing information is, is a problem. I mean, we don't have an issue with that. Um, we're going to do, as stated before, we will continue to do our, what communication to do, our due diligence to make sure that people are for them. This don't go into effect tomorrow, it goes into effect in January. There will be some, some grace given, um, but we do, um, as the information is put out, it's, it's, it's just like it's put out by the federal government, anybody, it's also the responsibility of the people to...
Yes.
Read up and, and have, and gain knowledge of the information that we're sharing. That's why we do these meetings. That's why these things are recorded and broadcasted, uh, live, and we need to make sure that we, we're, we're also putting some onus on the people to take care of their property. Uh, nobody that has a nuisance vehicle don't know that they have a nuisance vehicle. I just don't believe that. I just don't believe that. So we need to make sure we, we, we keep, 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 take care of the citizens, but also take care of the city as a whole to make sure we have a place that people want to live and grow, uh, raise a family. But we will share that information, no problem.
Hey, that was great. That was great. That, that really, um, calmed me.
Sharing the information.
It was, it was good, good information, and like you say, that is what we should do. Um, these, like you said, these meetings are recorded and our citizens have to look at these meetings, and also we can publicize this, what just happened, onto the city's website and all of the social medias. So now we're giving the public time to get ready for that change. If you, like you say, you know you got a nuisance vehicle, then you probably need to start working on...
Yes, sir.
Your issues right now.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. If we don't have any more questions, we can...
I think the attorney wants to say something.
I did, I did just want to state real quick, um, this, this ordinance as written does say it's going to go into effect immediately, so I just wanted to make that clear and we could...
So not January, uh, once it's voted on, voted on, it's going to happen?
I was calling the building code, I'm sorry. That's on me.
Oh, no, 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 no. I mean, that's why she's there, our city attorney. She catch me too, all the time.
Absolutely.
But thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. So we have some more. Okay, Councilmember Alvarez. Um, I'm not sure, we're not, I don't think they're finished.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I think you hit the nail on the head. And again, just for additional clarification, this state law has been on the books since nineteen ninety-five, nineteen ninety-five, so it's not anything new. The City of Colleen has been enforcing it, the entire state has been enforcing it since nineteen ninety-five, or they should be. Um, and I don't recall any, uh, news or Colleen Daily Herald's here, maybe they can attest to, uh, somebody in the news saying, hey, my car was, was taken from me, and this is an issue. I don't recall ever seeing a, a news story where somebody was complaining that, uh, about the state's law about junk vehicles. So, uh, again, I don't think that there's an, I don't think that there's an issue.
One moment. Melissa Brown, that is your first warning for disrupting him. Please stop. Councilmember Alvarez, I apologize, continue.
No, no worries. Um, you know, so again, it's, I think what Mr. Reynolds said is correct. You know, part of the onus is on us, um, to be well-informed citizens. Uh, I have asked code enforcement in the past to, um, consider making some PSAs, especially about junk vehicles, um, IPMC, those types of things that are not as common. A lot of times when you ask the public what they think about code enforcement, they say, uh, those are the grass police, but they don't know all these other, uh, ordinances and laws that, uh, that are enforced. So things like junk vehicles, you know, uh, IPMC issues on your home, dilapidated building, things like that are also things that I think should be communicated out to the public so that they're made aware of these things. Um, and lastly, I said this before, I wanted to clarify again with our city attorney, uh, Mrs. Clements, that on state laws, the cities, home rule cities can be more stringent, but we cannot be less stringent than that state law. Is that correct?
With this particular state law, that is true. Um, some laws are, are written differently and say it differently, but on this one, yes, um, we can have a broader definition of junk vehicle.
On this one, yes. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All righty. Can we get a motion? Oh, okay. Councilwoman Gonzalez, I apologize.
There's no question. You guys have said it before. I just want to make sure that, um, I just continue to reiterate that when we have changes of ordinances, it's very important to me that either we get it out publicly, put it on our website, however, we need to get this information out to the public so that way they can do their due diligence, but we do our part to make sure everyone is aware. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I think Mr. Reynolds, uh, stated, oh, he's back still.
We have a phenomenal, uh, communications team, and we will work with them to get to, make sure we do, get the message out.
And Fort Hood, to, to, okay. Uh, okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I was just going to make a, I move to approve P H twenty-five zero-seven-one as presented.
Solomon.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Did you close the public hearing? I just...
Yes, I, I closed it. Did I? I did, I thought I did.
I didn't recall it, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Alvarez.
I move to approve P H twenty-five zero-seven-one as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Uh, me, sorry. Councilmember Solomon.
Second, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all that, that made sure I'm in compliance. Thank you all that made sure I'm in compliance, thank you. Okay, all in favor, yes, all opposed, no. Councilwoman Cobb, is that yes? Oh, yes, ma'am, thank you. Motion carries, seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH twenty-five zero seven two. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Cecilia Leon on behalf of Tong Min and Claudia Lizeth Kilm, case number Z twenty-five thirty-five, Tarizo, and part of Lot One, Block Eleven, out of the Colleen Original Edition from B five Business District with HOD Historic Overly District to BC one General Business and Alcohol Sales District with HOD Historic Overly District. The subject property is locally addressed as three zero one East Avenue D, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the city of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately part of Lot One, Block Eleven, out of the Colleen Original Edition from B five Business District with HOD Historic Overly District to BC one General Business and Alcohol Sales District with HOD Historic Overly District, providing a savings clause, providing further repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you. Counsel, Mrs. Messer has gone through the slides, would you like for her to go back through? Okay. Is the applicant here? If so, would you like to speak? No? All right. Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown.
Sure is dim up there, isn't it? I don't really mind this project at all, but what I do mind is changing another HOD property into a BC one. I don't know why staff wouldn't recommend from the beginning, now that the city council has changed the ordinance to allow a CUP to be used as a BC one, why we wouldn't be recommending that the downtown locations are all under a CUP? Because under the CUP, anytime a building is vacant for more than twelve months or not being used for the conditioned purposes for more than twelve months, it reverts back to the underlying zoning, which would revert it back to a B five HOD zoning. In this case, if we change another property to BC one, then we have a location, another one that is just gonna forever be able to be a bar. How many bars do we need in that small little downtown area? How many bars have already gone out of business or unable to stay in business? How many of them are operating without proper zoning already? More than you think. This is about, you know, you just said that you want to infringe on the lives of your citizens. You want to infringe on their property, you want to infringe on a soldier being gone for two weeks and leaving their car parked on the side of the road, who might have a flat, and now their car can be towed away? Okay, but you say you want to do all of that just because you want the city to look a certain way. Mayor, you love downtown, so you want downtown to be just a bar district? That's where we're headed? Let's do the conditional use permits on these, instead of just automatically granting by right now for each property to be a BC one. That way, if it's a project that seems feasible, hey, go ahead and give them that conditional use. If it doesn't seem feasible, or if that business does not last, that building is not going to automatically just become another bar. That could end up being something that the city does not necessarily want in downtown. We have a lot of bars and clubs in the city, some of them are very nice, others not so much. How many times do you think the police have been called to some of these different bars surrounding the downtown area? Why would we continue to put that on there? Let's not make this a permanent change. Let's, let's go back and say, let's either pull this one or disapprove this one, even offer to waive the fee for their conditional use permit, for them to submit a new permit and come back for zoning for a CUP or BC one, but let's make it a CUP.
Michael Fanino.
On this particular issue, I have no dog in the fight. I wish the applicant well. Doesn't matter to me whether there's a bar downtown or not. My question is, what have you, as a council, what has the city done to set him up for success? I believe it's a him, if not, I apologize, but the applicant. What have you done to set the applicant up for success? An establishment such as this is, I don't know if luxury is the right way to put it, but it's someplace that people would want to spend their disposable income, something that I have said in my previous comments, that this city lacks. You can't have a playground for the residents, adults, if they don't have the money to spend. People cannot spend what they do not earn. I driven through downtown over the weekend. Once again, I could use the parking places as a second lane of traffic. But you're all convinced, you have convinced yourselves, that downtown is the key. That may be, but you're forgetting the first and foremost element, people have to have the cash to spend, and on a regular basis, to make these places successful and desirable. So perhaps, if you can't create businesses, maybe get off our backs about taxes and let this applicant have a shot, a fair shot at success. When it comes to downtown businesses, citizen zero, council one, the only, there's only one person up here who has made a dime off of a downtown initiative. Isn't that right, Mr. Segura?
Public hearing closed. A council member, can I get a motion to approve or disapprove PH dash twenty-five dash zero seven two? Mayor Protem.
Mayor, move to approve PH dash twenty-five zero seven two.
Councilmember Kendrick.
A second.
All in favor, yes, all opposed, no? Is that a yes, Councilwoman Cobb? I got you. Motion carries, seven to zero. We will now start on our discussion items. I made sure I did close public hearing, right? Okay, thank you, thank you. Discussion items, Madam City Secretary, whenever you're ready.
Yes, ma'am. DS twenty-five zero five four, receive quarterly financial report.
Thank you, welcome back, Ms. Tanglin.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, counsel. Today, I'm presenting the four quarter financial report. This is the quarter that ends fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Here's your accounting calendar for twenty-five, we're in December second, that's our four quarter financial report, and we saw early our investment report. Are we going to have an overview of the staffing indicators, a review of major operating funds, and so on, special revenue funds? For the staffing indicators turnover, the overall turnover for fiscal year twenty-five was fifteen point ninety-three percent. We are a fill and total classified seventy-three percent, but police and fire were in the nineties. So public safety were about ninety percent fill in this fiscal year. Now going to look at the major funds. For general fund, for the year today, a total for September thirty, twenty twenty-five, we estimated to have a hundred and twenty-nine million, collected about a hundred and three percent of budget, and it's an increase of one point ninety-six percent from last previous year. When it comes to the expenses, we spent a hundred and twenty-six point seven million, ninety-five percent of the budget, two point one five percent increase from prior year. We end up with the ending fund balance of today six point seven million. For water and sewer fund, we collected ninety-seven percent of our revenue, and we spent ninety-five percent of the expenses of the budget. It's a decrease from prior year, and you see the decrease is because of that million that we received from Harke Heights for WCID, but the expenses went up seven point sixty-nine percent. The fund balance ending was eleven point one million. For solely waste fund, we collected ninety-nine point ninety-eight percent of the budget, an increase of four point eight percent. We spent ninety-four point nine, an increase of four point eighty-five percent, and we end the fund balance at six point nine nine three. For drainage, we collected ninety-eight percent of the budget, we spent ninety percent, an increase almost of a percent on the revenues, a decrease of almost two percent on the expenses, and we end up with a one point seven million. For aviation, aviation did pretty good, we collected a hundred and ten percent of the budget, an increase of eighty-one percent from last prior year. We spent eighty-seven percent of the budget, an increase of thirty-two percent, this is because of the exile agreement, and the, and the fund balance was three point three million. For golf carts fund, we collected a hundred and one percent of the revenues, we spent eighty-eight point seven percent of the budget for expenses, an increase of three point five percent on revenues, increase of four point seventy-five on expense, and we ended three hundred and sixty thousand. For hotel occupers tax fund, we collected seventy-one percent, we're still struggling with the SDRs, still working on it. We spent ninety-one percent of the budget, an increase of two point thirty-three percent, a decrease on revenues of five percent, and we end a fund balance of eight hundred thousand For the street maintenance fund, we collected a hundred and one percent of the budget, a decrease of one point six. We spent forty-two percent of the budget, a decrease of eighteen percent. Most of this funding, we'd have the revised budgets probably because we encumbered the funds, so it's going to roll over for next year, but the fund balance ending is sixteen point nine million. That's all the funds I have, you guys have any questions, I will be happy to answer.
Yes, ma'am, there are some questions for you.
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the water fund, so ninety-seven percent collected, is there, can you explain why? Is it because of those that we were not able to collect, or any other reason?
And you're talking about the charges for services?
Yes. Is that, is the intergovernmental, the total amount? I see
The total amount? The ninety-seven? Well, the, the decrease is pretty much because of the intergovernmental, it's the one million we got from Harke Heights last year, and it's a one-time money that we got for WCID, right? And that's why if you actually decrease, we actually only collected forty-eight point one last year, compared to this year, we increased four hundred thousand.
Yeah, I see, and that's a good sign. I was just curious, when we have revenues and we, I see that we're not collecting almost close to three percent or two and a half percent, pardon my math, two point seven percent. I'm just curious where the, and those are smaller numbers, but they're meeting in the long run, just curious.
Yes, if you're talking about the charges for services, sir?
No, and under the percent budget, I, under, yes, at the top, yeah, where the
Yes, it's because of the charges for services, that's the water collection, so, so what happens sometimes is the cycle, right? I was looking at water and sewer, and twenty-four days of September were billed in October.
Got it.
And then, if we, these are estimated amounts, so we will have a journal entry for added purposes in the next month or so.
Okay, and then for drainage, is that a similar explanation for drainage, what, the decrease in drainage?
Yes, it's the similar situation.
And then SDR collection, is there anything the council needs to do to help put strength and, or teeth on that ordinance that we passed for collecting and registering SDRs?
For the SDRs, right now, we're having meetings with the vendor, and they are producing some letters, to send everybody letters that are out of compliance, and then we expect them to have more permits requested, or more people that can actually pay the taxes without the permits until they work all, that they have to do to get their houses to a standard. So we're working with the vendor right now. We have talked about maybe change the ordinance, but it's just, we're just talking, and whenever we're ready to bring it up to you guys, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So you say you got that under control?
Yes.
I love it, I love it, you are amazing.
That's all I have.
Oh, that was great, I got it. Councilmember Kendrick.
That's probably on the O.
Oh, is it? Okay, as always, Mrs. Tanglin, you are simply the best, like I sang that for Eva, so I'd be singing that for you, call me. You do a great job, very detailed. Thank you, Mayor Protem, great questions, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're winding down now. All right, so Madam Secretary, would you please read fourteen and fifteen under council members' request for future agenda item?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
RQ twenty-five zero one zero, Colleen Children's Museum and Immersion Center Initiative. RQ twenty-five zero one one, Original Fire Station Number One, Avenue D Fire Station, Request for Proposal, RFP.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, madam. Counsel, thank you for allowing me to place this on the agenda. My hopes is that we can bring it back for discussion in the near future. This is something I'm circling back around, this is a community initiative, part of a charge that was given to me in the beginning of my first run for council, and so now the community has expressed interest and reignited passion about creating a holistic childhood development option for kids, in partnership with the ISD, in partnership with the city. And so there's a great proposal that I have planned, and my hopes is that you all will allow us to bring it back and share with you what some of the community members have in mind.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, counsel, you heard Councilwoman Gonzalez' proposal, all in favor, yes, all opposed, no? Councilman Solomon, oh, you have questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yes, sir, motion or direction, sir?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
I'm gonna make a motion of direction to put this on the agenda, that is RQ twenty-five dash zero one zero.
A future agenda item, sir?
I'm sorry.
Did you say a future agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, yes, sir.
It's a future agenda item.
Yeah, your mic may be just a little tad low down there, Councilman Solomon, it may be my ear infection, it could be either or. Mayor Protem.
A second.
Okay. Councilwoman Cobb, all in favor, yes, all opposed, no? Are you in favor? Is it yes from you? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Oh, you're welcome. Did the motion, what was it? Was it, did it come up seven to zero?
It's seven to zero, mayor. It came up six to zero, and then I saw you acknowledging Councilmember Cobb, which would make
Yes, ma'am, unless the city attorney confirmed it, it's not right. I got, she got to confirm it. All right, motion carries, seven to zero. Okay, we are on the next item, Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor, and we talked about this previously and earlier this evening, that, you know, vacant, government-owned buildings are both unproductive and a strain on local resources. I believe that this building in particular is an opportunity to turn a liability into a tax-producing asset, not only for our downtown, but for our local taxpayers as well. We saw the tremendous success that we had with the Southern Roots Building, and during that RFP process, we received, it was around thirty proposals for that building, so that shows the, the attraction, that people are there, people are wanting to come to downtown. So I think this is a perfect building. You know, we don't have the resources, I don't believe, to, to put into that building. It's being used for storage, I think it could be better allocated as a, put it back on the tax rolls and let it produce some revenue and bring another local business to downtown.
Thank you, we'll see it. All in favor, oh, motion or direction, sorry about that. Councilwoman
I was just gonna move to put it on a future agenda item for RQ twenty-five dash zero one one.
The motion or direction, ma'am? Future agenda, yes, ma'am. Mayor Protem.
A second to motion.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cobb, do you approve or disapprove? Approve or disapprove?
Approve.
If you approve, do this. Thumbs up. You approve? All right, I like that. Thank you, thank you. So motion, pa, no? Pass, seven to zero. Thank you all. Thank you all. All right, with that being said, we will now get ready to go into our executive session. Counsel and staff that presented today, thank you, great way to start off December, very thorough evaluations, I mean, thorough presentations. So pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Law, Government Code 551.001, the mayor now calls a closed meeting of the city council on the second day of December 2025 at 4:48 PM. Under the following authority, Section 551.074, Personnel Matters, the city council will conduct a city manager annual evaluation, public discussion of this matter would not be in the best interest of the city. Agenda item DS-25-055. We will now go into closed session. So we will go into our resolution, which is RS-25-189, and it's to consider a memorandum and a resolution confirming the city manager annual evaluation in consideration for a 3% cost of living adjustment to his pay. Can I get a motion on that? So the council have discussed this, have had the evaluation, and in the discussion, the council consensus was to give Mr. Kegel 3% cost of living allowance. Councilmember Segarra?
Mayor, thank you, in lieu of giving our city manager an excellent rating for everything that he's done, I make a motion to increase his pay, give him a 3% coal allowance.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Second.
All, okay, thank you both. Councilman Solomon, no, you don't have anything to say, do you? You went off, so did you want to talk before you got clicked off, or did you click yourself off? Okay, you pushed yourself off, all right. All in favor, yes, all opposed, no? Is Councilwoman Cobb still on?
No.
She's not? Well, Councilwoman Cobb was a part of the evaluation of Mr. Kegel. Pass that to the city attorney, thank you. Motion carries six to zero. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Council, Mayor Protem?
Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn and wish the alphas a happy Father's Day.
I'm sorry, did you say happy holiday?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Solomon?
Seconded, Madam Mayor.
All right, you know you're wrong, you know you're wrong. All in favor, yes, all opposed, no? You know you're wrong. I just realized what you said. Motion carries six to zero. Meeting adjourned. Now we will go into our special meeting.